So we're gonna have our public hearing on the budget and I will just turn it straight away over to you Jackie for.
All right, and Natasha, I just made you co-host so you can let people in if they come in. So welcome to public hearing. As I think all of you know, our budget process begins in August. We begin talking about what are the influences that will need to factor into our planning for the following year. We do that before we even start the year that we're in. So throughout the fall, we meet to discuss our curriculum needs, instructional needs, what's going on with the buildings, what our needs are. There, we look at projected enrollment. We look at our, the IEPs and the needs that specific students have and factor all those pieces in into our building level recommendations and that we work through with the principals and the administrators in the buildings and at the SAU. And as a foundation to all of that work is this idea that our goal is to address the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students. We also, with our newly developed portrait of a learner, supporting students to become respectful collaborators, effective communicators, and knowledgeable problem solvers and creators is the goal and a focus for our work and thus for our budgets. Providing the necessary instruction to meet the needs of each of our learners. And then we seek to be on a continuous growth model where we're looking at is what we're doing working. And that permeates from our PLCs where teachers meet to see if their instructional practices are effective with students and are having an impact on student learning. To, you know, my team and we're doing analysis of did this change work and do we have the data to prove that? And always striving to see if there are ways that we can be more efficient and fiscally responsible. So as all of you are well aware, to say 2020 was a challenge is an understatement. And you know, where we started the year to very quickly moved into COVID. And I look back on my emails and the difference between at the end of February break, I was sending out emails about hand washing. And that evolved very quickly. And I think the term we used was a rapidly evolving situation. And boy, did it evolve. I am incredibly proud of the staff who prioritized right from the get-go, having students in the building, understanding the role schools play in students' lives, and they partnered with families. It's two, I think Henneker Community School students have had a smooth and productive COVID time, more than I think a lot of other schools. I believe, and Mr. Colby could correct me if I'm wrong, since we began the school year, we have needed to be remote only nine times. And it's remarkable and is a testament to the safety factors that were put in place and the commitment from our teachers, from our staff, from our administrators. So that leads us to where we are now because COVID definitely has an impact on our planning for this year's budget. This presentation will talk primarily about Articles 3 through 5. And so Article 3 is our budget and we're putting forth a proposed budget of $8,931,795 with the default amount being $8,736,824. We have a collective bargaining agreement that we just ratified at this meeting and are bringing forth to the voters. That is in the amount of $52,193. And then the last article is seeking authorization to modify our current contingency fund based on a law that was recently passed in September. And Chris Roy will speak to that later. So when we look at, we are currently operating under a budget that is in the amount of $8,381,31. The increase we're proposing in our proposed budget is a $550,764 increase, which represents a 6.57% increase. The default is a $355,793 increase or 4.25%. So digging into this right away because this is key. Those are, those are big numbers, big increases. And they are pri-, much of that increase is the result of an accounting change that we are making. Each year, we use the IDA grant, which is, helps support students who have IEPs. We, Henneker students have always benefited and used and been supported by IDA funds. Currently, those funds are consolidated at the SAU. And so the Henneker money is pooled in with the money for Ware and Stoddard and John Stark. The change we're putting forth that necessitates a significant increase into the budget for Henneker is to disaggregate that grant and put the Henneker portion within the Henneker budget. And so what that means is we have to have a place in the budget. We have to increase the budget in order to be able to use the money. But there are offsetting revenues that directly correspond with that increase. And so the Henneker budget will increase by $207,823. And like I said, that is directly offset. So that $200,000 represents 2.48% of the 6.57% increase that I first talked about. The other increase that is actually, that doesn't increase taxes locally, but is an increase to the budget you're more familiar with. It is our food service. The food service, we contract with Fresh Picks and they, that contract requires that they're self-funding. But we still, because it is part of our budget, any increase within that line needs to be part of our budget, but has revenues, offsetting revenues that are associated with it. So that's a $30,934 increase. That's a 0.37% increase. When you take into consideration, we've got the overall proposed budget increase of $550,000. Subtract, or it's offset, as far as when we're just looking at tax impact, the $200,000 from the grant revenues and the $30,000 from the food service revenues increases. We've got an increase with tax impact in our proposed budget of $312,724. So that in effect becomes a 3.72% increase for our proposed budget. So then the next big hit we've kind of taken with our budget relates to our mandatory contributions to the New Hampshire Retirement Fund. We are, we contribute for all our employees. Currently, we contribute for our teachers at 17.8% of their salary. And for other employees, it's at 11.17%. The new rates increase that our contributions as a district, it increases by just either side of 3%. So for our employees, it increases at 2.89% and for our teachers, 3.22%. When you apply that 3.22% to all of our salaries, that is, it's a significant amount. And so the increase to our budget that's due to mandatory retirement contribution rate change is $112,578.79. So of the 3.72% proposed increase, 1.34% of that is related to mandatory retirement contribution. We also, healthcare, each year we are given a guaranteed maximum rate increase for our health premiums. This year, our, that rate is a 7.3% increase. That means we are guaranteed that our increase, once those rates are set, will not be more than 7.3%. It could come in less. So last year, we actually had a negative GMR. And so we went into these discussions knowing that we were going to save some money on healthcare. We go into this budget discussion knowing that we're going to have an increase to our healthcare premiums. We know it's maxed out at a 7.3% increase, so that is what we need to budget. That represents an almost 1% increase or $76,383.3. So if you take the increased grant revenues and you take the food service increase, you also take the retirement and the healthcare premium, those things represent almost all of, all but 1.47% of the proposed budget increases. So that leaves us with about $123,000 worth of proposed requests. And those are primarily, those are almost exclusively, we are putting forward in our proposed budget two teaching positions and a change to how the tech coordinator's position is structured. So all but that $123,000 are figures and increases you're going to see in both the default budget and in our proposed budget. SB2, under SB2, the default budget is a formula that consists of the current year's budget figure, minus one-time expenses, plus or minus contractual obligations, and then anything related to health, safety, or mandated by law. So our number this year for our default budget is $8,736,824. That is $194,971 less than the proposed budget. And this, this slide just presents that in a, in a different way. So you have our default budget, our current budget. The difference between those two is $355,000. And then the difference between the default and our proposed budget for next year is $194,971. This report is, is found, you can link to it on our webpage if you haven't seen it already. But it breaks down, in the first two, you've got the different object lines. And then you've got what the increase or decreases are in the default versus the proposed. And then the difference between the two is on the final line. And if you're, as you look at this, you'll notice that the first two lines represent almost all of that $194,000, that is the difference between the default and the proposed. So I'd like to dig into those a little bit. And so we have, within our default and our proposed, we have census changes. People move positions. We hired a lovely nurse after someone with more experience left. And so her salary is less than the person who she replaced. We have CBA agreements. We had a one-year contract with the teachers and we were at their, we're in year three with our support staff. And so those already voted on changes are reflected. And then wage pool increases for our non, our members who are, employees who are not part of the collective bargaining union. So those represent increases that are in both budgets. Then we are putting forth in our proposed budget, a seventh grade teacher position, an elementary teacher position, and an increase to the tech coordinator position. Currently, our tech coordinator is not a full-year position. And we need him with our increased reliance on technology. The last few years, we've actually issued him a supplemental contract because we have that need. And so we'd like to formalize that and make him a 260 employee and keep him busy, or than we already are. And so seventh grade, the seven, it's funny for me to think about this because when I started in SAU 24, this, the class that is going to go into seventh grade next year, they were little bitty ones, right? And we were trying to figure out what to do with this bubble of kids. Right now, that group is at 57 students. Most of our classes are around 40. And, and that group has actually gotten bigger, not smaller, as they go through as the grades. And so we, the folks at Henneker Community School were pretty creative in addressing, how do you deal with this, this bubble moving through a system? And so we had the multi-age classrooms, multi-grade classrooms. And, you know, moved all the way through over the last five years, moved through the system. Now they're going to go into seventh grade. That multi-grade approach in seventh grade is much more difficult. You know, we already have a modified middle school experience for our students. It, it would, it would be difficult. It would be a whole rethinking of the structure to reconfigure that to adapt for this group. So we're proposing a seventh grade teacher. I could, I mean, that teacher, we'd need them for eighth grade also. And, and then, you know, unless we had another bubble, I could see that position, there wouldn't be a need for it after those two years. And then the last position, the second position that we're putting forward is an elementary school teacher. We were able to navigate COVID-19 at Henneker Community School because we reassigned people. We committed to having smaller cohorts of self-contained kids. And so, you know, we just had a case in the building and only a limited number of students were impacted by that. And which is great, and again, a testament to the work going on in the building. As we look to beyond COVID, we, one, we need to get a librarian back. We need an interventionist. We need enrichment. Like, we need all of those things that we, because we were in a crisis, we reconfigured to do what we needed to do for this year. In the multi-age, I know so much good energy came out of that and creativity, and that was a great solution in the time. As we look to the needs our students are going to have or have right now, post-COVID. And, and the reasoning behind putting this forward and this elementary school teacher forward is to have teachers focused on one grade level, we think would be beneficial for, for all students. And this would allow us to do that. So though, that, that represents the difference between the salary line, between the default and the proposed. And then the benefits line, we've got a retirement and GMR. And then we have the benefits in the proposed budget related to the new positions. Because of course, the seventh grade and the elementary are positions that would have health benefits to them. And so whereas the tech coordinator increase is a position that's already benefited, it would just be an increase to retirement, FICA, and those associated benefits. So that's the bulk of what we're talking about as far as the difference between the default and the proposed. The next, the six lines that are in blue, if you add them up, there are cuts and additions and little changes between. Matt did a lot of work trying to make sure things were represented where they rightfully go. We also looked at what we had been spending in lines and made cuts or made additions to more accurately represent what we had been spending. An example would be our copier contract. That although, you know, we had been spending, whatever we'd been spending, we were budgeting $4,000 less than that. So we added that $4,000 in to represent what, what we do need to spend. But when it all gets broken down, there's only, this only represents about a $20,000 increase between those six lines. A couple of things I do want to highlight within there, even though they, they might have associated cuts that balance them out. If you're looking under purchase services and if you're looking in the more detailed budgets that we have posted, the SAU shares, the Henneker's contribution to the SAU shares went up $57,853. Part of that is, in that, part of that represents a technology position at the SAU that Henneker's portion of is about $25,000. We committed to, and there is a offsetting decrease within the contracted service line for an instructional coach. That is a $30,600 decrease. And so it offsets the cost of the position we said it would offset, and actually to the tune of $5,000 more than that. There were also within the purchase services, a decrease for some PT and other needs that are identified within IEPs. As I said, the property services line, you know, we increased the, the line that reflects our copier contract. And there were a lot of shifts within that budget, within that budget line. Other purchase services, there was about a $10,000 increase to our transportation contract. And based on student need, we also took out $70,000 from our out-of-district placement line, which is reflected in both the default and proposed. Supply lines, you'll notice there's a cut within the supply lines in the proposed and not the default, because the default is a formula. In the proposed, we knew, we, we are proposing some cuts that would offset in the, the next line, the other purchaser, or I'm sorry, the property, which represents some replacement equipment. And so those come close to balancing each other out. Under other, we've got hosting fees, some dues and fees around the library, our firewall. And then finally, the finance, financial transfers, that $193,000 is the grants and the food service. Any question? So again, the pie chart which shows we've got two-thirds of our budget is tied up in salaries and benefits. And then the, the rest of the pie is you know, the, the other stuff that we do, that yellow piece is the fine, the transfers, the grants and food service. Any questions about the default or the proposed budget before I, we move it, move along to the Article 4?
Do you want to take questions from board members right now, or do you want public to be able to participate right there? And so what I'll say, if anybody wants to ask a question and you're a member of the public, there is, under the participants tab, if you click on participants, at the bottom, you're going to see a little blue hand that says raise hand. If you raise your hand, the blue hand, then we'll be able to see that and we can call on you. And then we don't have a lot of public here, but if you would like to say something, board members, admin, jump in. But I'll just give you a chance, if you have something to say, to raise your hand and we can acknowledge you that way. So I'll give you a minute. There will be more opportunities to ask questions other than just this one. I don't see anybody raising a hand, Jackie, so go ahead.
I am starting to understand why people use two screens.
I have two. It's really helpful.
So the, again, I, I can't emphasize how appreciative and appreciative, I am of the, the teachers throughout this whole situation. They came to the negotiations as fellow community members, recognizing the moment. And they sought to extend the contract that was in place. There's not an increase to the grid, but they sought to have teachers move up their step. So this agreement represents an average increase per teacher of six, I'm sorry, 1.67%. The raises range between $500 and $1,500. And it, the, the total adds up to $52,193. One thing to note is that teachers are also impacted, their portion of health insurance premiums will also have a seven point, up to 7.3% increase for their premiums, as well as the district's premiums, portion of the premiums. Questions about the teacher's contract?
And again, if you have a question, do the raise your hand button?
The one-year contract, so it does mean we're back to the table for next year.
There will be a lot of that next year.
All six.
I know. And all right. I don't see any hands raised, but again, we'll have more opportunity in a few minutes.
And the last slide, I'm actually going to turn over to Chris, because you are probably sick of hearing me talk.
No, we're not, but we're happy to hear Chris talk.
We're going to give Jackie a break. So the, the contingency fund, it's an RSA that was adopted by Henneker in, in past years. So I'm sure you all know it well, but essentially it allows the school, the school board to vote yearly on retaining a, up to currently 2.5% of the net assessment of the year and putting that in a fund for contingency for. and putting that in a fund for contingency, for emergencies, things along those names, lines. The, the current law was amended this year that raised that percentage to, to five percent. So what we're looking to do is, we're looking to potentially have the adoption of the RSA now say that it will allow the school district to follow the law. So whatever the law states, if it's, if they go up to six, we would be allowed to do six. If they go down back to two point five again, we would be, we wouldn't have to then bring the article back to this forum. The chart that you see below gives an illustration of what those numbers may look like from year to year. So the, the net assessment is the number that we're calculating the amount retained off of. The amount retained is what we've actually retained in each year, going back to seventeen eighteen. And then, so of those amounts, all except for eighteen nineteen, were exactly two point five percent. And then you can see the change from year to year. So for, for this three-year past period and potentially for this year, the, the changes that you see are actually what ends up going in and out of the retained, the, the fund balance at the end of the year. So when, whenever this law was adopted, the, the, the amount retained went into the fund and then we're just changing it from year to year. The next column is what it looks like at five percent. And then if the final, the final column is the change amount if, if we had been doing five percent all along. So again, if we had been doing five percent all, all along, those amounts would be what would be changing from year to year. So that last line there is twenty twenty one, that, that retention has not happened yet, that would happen in August. So if this, if, if we were still under the rules of two point five percent, I would be bringing a hundred and forty four thousand three hundred and ninety two dollars and fifteen cents to the board to vote on. And they, they have the choice to do less than two point five percent more. But at that point, if, if this law was not adopted, not more. And so the, the maximum increase for that would have been three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and sixty three cents. But if this law is adopted, they would then have the option to do the five percent, which is the two hundred and eighty eight thousand seven hundred and eighty four and thirty cents. And so to that theme, if the, if the board decided to go to that five percent, there would be that initial investment into the retained earnings. And from there, it would be a year-to-year increase or decrease.
So Chris, can you just remind folks, what are we allowed to use that fund for? It's not, it's not really a rainy day fund, there are some really specifics, so can you remind us?
So my understanding, and I think that the interpretation, as we've read the law, has, has it, it was less restrictive than I had thought, but it requires a public meeting to, to vote on that. And it, it needs to be an emergency situation. So it's not just a straight rainy day fund, it, it's, there needs to be meat to the, the situation occurring. I don't know, do you have anything else to add to that, Jackie? Is that pretty much what we understand it to be?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Excellent. Thanks, Chris.
All right. And then going into the, the impact, the tax impact with our, so with our proposed budget, we're projecting a, a dollar seventy seven per thousand on our proposed budget increase. And the default is a, a dollar and thirty six cent per thousand. On a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, the proposed budget would repres, that represents a four hundred and forty two dollar fifty cent increase. And the default represents a three hundred and forty dollar increase. One thing that I, we had mentioned early on is we are going to take a hit in our adequacy funding. And that's, you know, Chris, when he put this together, the revenue, you'll, you can see on the revenue forms that we are projecting much less in adequacy. We have, if you take our preschoolers out, because we don't get adequacy funding for our preschoolers, we have a twenty student decrease from October one this year, from October one last year. And if, if you remember the, the adequate, adequacy calculation, you know, there's the thirty seven hundred dollars per child. But then on top of that, there are all different add-on ways that we get funding. And, and so, you know, part of this projected tax rate does factor in what we're expecting to be, you know, a hit to our adequacy funding. That may, there may be some legislative remedies that come out of Concord. And, and so if you have the ear of your legislature, legislator, it, it might be worth a good conversation. But, but this is where we landed. Chris, anything to add?
No, the, obviously, as you can see there, the Warren article, the Warren article, it would be a cost taxpayers of eleven cents per thousand. But then that goes into the projected tax rate of twelve point four six on the projected side.
Excellent.
So back to, these are the articles. And a big thank you.
Yes, we love the big thank you, because that's so important. And we are really, really thankful for your hard work, Chris's hard work, Natasha, Greg, everyone involved there at the S U and our, our building level administration for the hard work on the budget. At this point, we are, we'll have some more public comment. If anybody wants to weigh in on the public hearing presentation, go ahead and raise your hand. And again, that's by clicking the participant icon at the bottom and then raising your hand with the little blue raise hand icon. And we'll go ahead and take more public comment, and then we're going to get back to our board meeting after that.
While you're, while you're waiting for that, I would love to point out that the retained earnings are year-by-year only, these are not accumulated.
Correct, really good point. So we're just adjusting by a few thousand dollars. And then to the other issue right there is, even if we get an approval to go up to five percent, that is not something that, that we have to do. It's an opportunity to do, but we don't have to do it this year or any other year. All right, so I don't see any public comment. What I will do then is to close the public hearing and we will resume our regular board meeting.